That was kind of weak. Sounds like a Lincoln log. That sounds a little bit better. All right, evening everyone, welcome to the March Planning Commission meeting. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'll go ahead and do the opening prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand with me. By the God, thank you for this day. We thank you for our community. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to make decisions that better our community. Pray give us wisdom to make those and to be with us in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberal, free, and just.
All right, Laura, if you would, do roll call for the planning commission.
O'Gwen.
Here.
DeArman.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Byrd.
Here.
Prater.
Here.
Low.
Here.
Knack.
All right, six one, we do have a quorum. If I could, go ahead and get acceptance of the meeting minutes from our February Planning Commission meeting, or any corrections. If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Commissioner Low, a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner DeArman?
She beat me.
All right. Roll call vote, please, Laura.
Byrd, yes. Young?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
DeArman?
Yes.
All right, six zero, minutes are approved. Let's go ahead and shift over into our Board of Adjustment meeting, if you could. Roll call, please, Laura.
O'Gwen?
Here.
DeArman?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Byrd?
Here.
Prater?
Here.
Low?
Here.
Knack?
All right, six one, do have a quorum. All right, meeting minutes for our December 2024 Board of Adjustment meeting. Any corrections or changes? If not, entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Prater, a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Byrd, a roll call vote, please, Laura.
Byrd?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
DeArman?
Yes.
All right, six zero, minutes are approved. All right, it is 7:03, and we're going to go ahead and get into new business for the Board of Adjustment, Laura.
Okay, so our first item on the agenda is a variance for setbacks for Lot 6R, 7R, 10R, and 12R Block 3, Moore &amp; Martin Edition Tucker Land Surveying. So, I'm just going to preface at all of this, there are six variance requests on this agenda. They do relate to two different pieces of property where they're going to be replating them later on, on the Planning Commission agenda. I'm going to explain them the best that I can as we go through them. We do have to vote on each one of these separate variances, so just bear with me as we go through this. So the first one, again, is, this property is actually located at 112 North Monroe Street and 111 Walnut Street, as well as two vacant piece of properties that are adjacent to them. The property owner is VIP Homes, Tucker Land Surveying is the applicant. They are currently zoned R1 single family. There are two existing homes on the property, and they were wanting to be able to convert these nine lots into four different lots, so that they can have two lots for the existing homes, and then two lots to be able to build new proposed homes on them. Again, this property is located at the corner of North Monroe Street and Walnut Street. So the variance request for the first item is a setback variance. So for Lot 6R, as it shows for the requested replat, again, we are looking at this for the, just the variances at the moment. So currently, Lot 6R would not need a variance for any front setback or rear setback. It does meet the 25 front and the 25 rear. For Lot 7R, which is the corner lot, there is a request for a 25, I'm sorry, a 21-foot building setback versus a 25-foot front setback on North Monroe Street, and then it does meet the 25-foot front setback along Walnut Street. The applicant is requesting for an eight-foot rear setback if the house faces Walnut Street. Staff is asking for at least a 20-foot rear setback if that house gets rebuilt, so that it can face Walnut Street. Lot 10R, the applicant is requesting an 18-foot front setback. It does meet the 25-foot required rear setback. Staff is asking for Lot 10R to actually be a 25-foot front setback along Walnut Street. Lot 12R, the applicant is asking for an 18-foot front setback versus a 25-foot front setback. It does meet the 25-foot rear setback. Now, that's the setbacks in a nutshell. I'm not going to go any further on any of the variances, so I don't confuse anybody else. Does anybody have any questions that I can answer before we go any further on them?
The general reason for asking for these variances is?
The applicant's here, and he probably would be the best person to answer that question.
Okay, great. Applicant here. Kid, please state your name.
Nick Tucker, Tucker Land Surveying. Okay, so in a nutshell, she got all the variances right. The variance for 6R, the 25-foot building setback, has been applied to the revised plat. We're okay with that one. Lot 7R, the 21-foot setback along Monroe is to match the existing building line of the house that's already there. The reason for requesting the reduced rear setback now would be in the case that they did want to rebuild the home. If we move the setback line up 12 feet, the building space on the lot would be the exact same as what's there now, which means that they would only be able to build a floor plan like what exists there now, that was built in 1960. So they'd become somewhat limited. We are flexible on the eight-foot, but would request a minimum width, you know, for a standard three-bedroom, two-bath house on that, on that lot. On the other variances, Lot 10R, we are requesting an 18-foot building setback on that one in lieu of a 25-foot. This is the middle lot that is on Walnut Street. Currently, that lot sits is only 81-foot deep. With a 25-foot rear and a 25-foot front setback, it only leaves 30-foot of buildable space to include porches, which is not enough to build a reasonable three-bedroom, two-bath home. We would like to decrease that setback to 18-foot, which actually matches the house adjacent to it to the west, and so the facades of the houses would be lined up, or the porches would be lined up, and that would increase our buildable width to fit the plan that the client's chosen for the property. 12R, the front setback variance is to match an existing home. And that should summarize the variances. Any questions?
That's pretty clear, thank you, Nick. Yeah, appreciate that. Commissioners, have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Laura, anything else before I go on to ask for anybody else to speak?
No, sir.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, where, where is the applicant and staff's recommendations differing right now? I heard Nick agree into something.
So the-
Just want to be very clear on what the 6R-
So, the, the differences would be on what staff is asking for on 10R, which is the middle lot on Walnut Street. We are asking for it to meet the 25-foot front setback. The applicant's asking for 18.
So 10R, and then, and then 7R?
And then 7R on the rear setback, staff is asking for a, it could meet a 20-foot rear setback, versus they're asking for, currently an eight, but he did say that they were flexible on the eight-foot rear setback. But if the house is rebuilt, the rear, the house would have to face Walnut Street in order for it to have a rear setback, because if it faces North Monroe like it currently does, then it would only have an eight-foot rear setback.
Ideally, if they were to rebuild that house, which they have no intention of doing, the, the client has those two homes that are existing there as rentals, and the idea would be to build two new ones right there beside them, to have four rentals together. I doubt the house does get rebuilt. That's why I say they're probably flexible on that building setback line. If the lot was to, or house was to burn down, you know, they could come back with a, with a plot plan and a house plan, and possibly ask for another variance on that lot if needed at that time. The one that we do not want to be flexible with is 10R, and that is to give us enough buildable depth to put a standard 3-2 or 4-2 house on there that would fit. If we reduce it from the 18 to the 25, it decreases the buildable depth on the lot to around 30 feet, which includes front and back porches.
Okay. I guess another question for Laura, if you, if you were leaning towards giving on a front setback versus a rear setback, where would you fall in this situation right here? I mean, so if they'd move it back five feet, have 20 feet on front and back, is that better than 18 on the front and 25 on the back?
Yes, staff would prefer it to be further away from the street, because if there's any possibility of any kind of, whether it's widening, or sidewalks, or trails, or anything, it's more likely going to be along the street side.
Did you understand that, Nick?
I do. I mean, yeah, yeah, robbing Peter to pay Paul there. I mean, it's, as long as we can get the, the reduced rear to 18, then I think that we're okay with that.
I would be more inclined to agree with Laura, to see 25-foot on the front rather than on the rear. You've still got the same dimensions, you're just swapping your, your rear to your front.
And I believe my client would be okay with that.
Yeah.
The, the house plan chosen is one of the reasons why the request is at 18-foot, that, and it matches the house to the west. So, this house would be built seven foot further away from the road, which might not be aesthetically pleasing, and it would give a far decreased backyard, but it would help in the parking and sidewalk and whatever trail system is coming down Walnut Street in the next few years.
Now, we're talking about 10R, right? That's the one?
Yes.
I mean, that's the one that, 18-foot setback matches the adjacent-
Correct.
-other house structures. So to me, I think that's odd to push that back and all the other house structures.
To the left, it does, to the right, it does not.
Yeah, because it, it would line up, it would line up with 7R then, and you, you've got a little bit of offset there anyway, so, you know, one's going to be misaligned anyway.
The front of the homes on-
With the two existing-
That's correct. Yeah, correct. The front of the homes on 12R and 7R are actually aligned. The building line is set at the front of the porch, which is just a standard four-foot porch off the front of that house. So the facades of the houses for the two lots technically are aligned. But either way, it, it doesn't matter. I mean, if, if, if the board feels the, the variance is better on the rear, we can move it to the rear.
And you're asking for an 18-foot rear?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with that.
Would, would that also be the same on 12R? I mean, I know there's an existing structure there, but since we're replating that, would you make this contingent, you know, proving the existing structure as is, but a new structure would, would meet those change requirements?
Yeah.
You understand that, what I'm asking, Nick?
Yeah, if you're asking if I want to bump down the setback, the rear setback line for 12R as well?
Yep.
Um, I mean, yeah, if the board is in support of it, it would certainly give them more versatile use of the properties, should the house be demolished. Because right now, that house is on a squeeze. It's a very old thousand-square-foot house, just not typical to be built for a rental these days. So if, if, if possible, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. Then all your, everything on that street, everything would be symmetrical lineup, and for future, you know, building, I think that's a good idea.
So, Mr. Low, are you asking for Lot 12R to have a 25-foot front contingent on if the house is rebuilt?
I, I was saying match 10R with it, the same setback on 10R that we, if it was rebuilt, it would match the setback on 10R, and be grandfathered in with the existing structure.
Right. And that wouldn't affect them, should they want to do a remodel permit or renovation permit on this house? Laura? Because if so, we're not in favor of that. I just don't know how-
That is, that is a slippery slope right there.
That's why I asked. I don't want to be caught later with, again, if we, if we did not decrease, I mean, if we moved the seven feet, it doesn't matter, but if we just decrease that to a 25, then it, it puts the squeeze on. But either way, if we're going to re-
So if, if they, technically, if they wanted to remodel it, they could come back before this board and ask for a variance to be within the plotted setbacks.
So, then right now, we'll just move both fronts to 25?
Correct.
And both rears to 18?
And both rears to, to 18.
Okay. We're good with that, 10R and 12R.
Okay, do I need to spell these out before we do a roll call?
Yeah, since it's still, it's still public hearing, though. I think we need to ask for anyone to speak against this item. All right, thank you, Nick. You go ahead and ask, is there anyone here in the audience to speak against this item? All right, seeing none. Laura, if you would, spell it out for everybody.
Okay, and, and Nick, make sure you've got, we're on the same page. So Lot 6R, there's going to be force, this is for setbacks only, there's none being asked for on 6R. On 7R, the front setback along North Monroe being reduced from 25-foot to 21-foot. On the rear setback, what were you giving for that one? I don't think we ever, you said you were willing to negotiate that, but I don't think we ever came to a number on the rear setback for 7R.
For cohesion for now, let's just, we'll just do 18.
18?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Then on Lot 10R, a 25-foot front setback, and then an 18-foot rear setback. Lot 12R would be a 25-foot front setback and an 18-foot rear setback.
I think that sums it up.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Low?
Second.
Second from O'Gwen. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
DeArman?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
All right, six zero, motion does pass. All right, next item, Laura.
Variance request for the lot width, Lot 6R, 7R, 10R, and 12R Block 3, Moore &amp; Martin Edition Tucker Land Surveying. Okay, on these same four lots that they're requesting, now we're going to look at the lot width variance. So for Lot 6R, they are asking for a lot width variance from, being reduced from 75-foot wide to 56.5 feet along North Monroe Street. Lot 7R, along Walnut Street, they are asking for a lot width variance from 75 feet down to 70 feet. The North Monroe side of Lot 7R meets the required 75-foot minimum. Lot 10R, they're not asking for any width variance on that lot. Lot 12R, they're asking for a lot width variance from 75 feet down to 70 feet along Walnut Street.
All right, Nick, anything you want to add to discussion on this one?
There is not a lot width, 10R, that's just lot size.
Correct, that one has none for, you're not asking for. Yes.
Commissioners, have any questions? Anyone here to speak against this item? All right, seeing none.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Prater. Second from Commissioner Low. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
DeArman?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
All right, six zero, motion passes. Item C, Laura.
Okay, this is a variance request for the lot area of Lot 6R, 7R, 10R, and 12R Block 3, Moore &amp; Martin Edition Tucker Land Surveying. Okay, so on the same property, Lot 6R, the requirements are 7,500 square feet. They're asking for a variance to be reduced down to 5,659 hundred square feet. On Lot 7R, they're asking to be reduced down to 5,816 square feet. On Lot 10R, they're asking to be reduced down to 6,545 square feet. On Lot 12R, they're asking to be reduced down to 5,615 square feet. All the minimum requirements are 7,500 square feet.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Nick, is there anything you want to add to this one?
Couldn't find any more real estate to add.
Understand. Anyone here to speak against this item? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, have any questions? Recommend a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Low. Byrd, I'll take you on a second. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
DeArman?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
All right, six zero, motion passes. All right, next item, Laura.
Okay, so this is a variance request for setbacks for Lot 7R, 8R, 9R, Lewis Bailey Edition Tucker Land Surveying. So we're going to kind of go the same way, but let me get my papers flipped. So this piece of property is actually located at 511 South Grant and 509 South Grant. These are three plotted lots in the Old Town of Cabot, Lewis Bailey Edition. They are wanting to replat these later on in the Planning Commission agenda, currently as two full lots and a partial lot, to three lots. There are two existing houses, and then the third lot would be a vacant lot to be able to build a new structure on. So again, we'll go through this each one at a time. So I did have a couple typos, I apologize, in the staff report of this one. So for the setback variance for Lot 7R, they are asking to be reduced from a 25-foot front setback along South Grant Street to a 21-foot front setback. It does currently meet the 25-foot rear setback. Lot 8R, they are asking, there's not, they are not asking for any reduced setback on the front or the rear on 8R. Lot 9R, they're asking for a reduced setback along South Grant Street from 25 feet to 21 feet, and then along Suda Street, they're asking for a reduced setback from 25 feet to 18 feet. And then on Lot 9R, if that house ever is rebuilt, it would have to face South Grant Street in order to meet the rear setback requirement.
All right, is that it, Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Nick, any discussion on these?
The front setback requests along Grant Street are for the two existing structures that are in place, as well as the variance on Suda Street. Everything else meets city code, all sides and all rears are met, and then, you know, this is just for the existing structures.
Okay.
That's really it. The current parcel line actually runs through one of the houses, so that's kind of what sparked the replat to begin with, and then they do have enough space in the back room.
All right, thank you, Nick. Any questions from the commissioners? Laura?
Before Nick gets out, I, I appreciate you cleaning these up, I think that's a great thing to do. I, I think I'd want to see the same thing on these, kind of move that, you know, the front setback back to 25 and reduce the back four feet. That way, you, you maintain that consistency, you get a car out of the right of way to park, and-
True.
Okay.
And it knows, I know it doesn't fit for your existing structures, but it would-
But they, yeah, they'll get, they're, they're fine for conformance, for now. I mean, they'll be grandfathered in.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's-
So then we'll be requesting a, a 25-foot for all three lots, with a reduced rear on 7R and 9R to 21 feet.
Correct.
Okay.
You got that, Laura?
I'm making the changes right now.
I think that's a good recommendation.
And this is only along South Grant, correct? Are we, and we're keeping Suda Street at 18?
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing none, commissioners, entertain a motion to approve with the corrections we just made, and I don't know if you already need to read that off again, or?
I can, if you would like. So Lot 7R meets, they're going to meet the 25-foot front, and asking for a 21-foot reduced rear. Lot 8R, there are no requests for reductions in the setbacks. Lot 9R, they would do a 25-foot front, and then a reduction of a 21-foot rear setback, and then 18 feet along, reduce that back for Suda Street.
So match what, what you got, Nick?
I'll approve.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Low, second from Prater. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
Byrd?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
O'Gwen?
Yes.
DeArman?
Yes.
All right, six zero, motion passes. All right, next item, item E, Laura.
Variance for lot width, Lot 7R, 8R, and 9R, Lewis Bailey Edition Tucker Land Surveying. Okay, again, so for Lot 7R, the required lot wi- Okay, again, so for lot 7R, the required lot width is 75 feet at the building line. So for lot 7R, they're asking to be reduced down to 53 feet. For lot 8R, they are asking to be reduced down to 62 feet. In lot 9R, along South Grant only, they are asking to be reduced down to 71 feet. Suda Street meets the width requirement.
All right, thank you, Laura. Nick, anything to add to those? Anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Byrd, give a second?
Second.
Second from DeArmond. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
All right, 6-0, motion passes. And the last item, item F, Laura.
Variance lot area, lot 7R, 8R, and 9R, Louis Bailey addition, Tucker land surveying. Okay, so this is the lot area. So the required lot area for R1 is 7,500 square feet. So for lot 7R, they are asking to be reduced down to 4,261 square feet. Lot 8R actually meets the 7,500 square foot requirement. Lot 9R, they're asking to be reduced down to 5,740 square feet.
All right, thank you, Laura. Nick, anything to add to that? Okay. Anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing none, commissioners, entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve from DeArmond, give a second?
Second.
Second from Prater. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
Lowe?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
All right, 6-0, motion passes. All right, it is 7:29 and we'll go ahead and adjourn our board of adjustment meeting and go back over into our planning commission meeting. And we will start off with our public hearing with the first item, rezone, item A.
Rezone lots 1 through 5, Four Mile Creek, Phase 1, and parts of the southwest quarter of Section 6, Township 4, North Range 9 West. Rezone request from R1 single family to C3 open display district. This is actually for the city of Cabot. So this piece of property is actually located out off of Willie Ray Street, where the street shop currently is and where the game time at the grounds is currently located. This, the property also encompasses where the Lion College will go, as well as the CAS building. Currently, again, this property is zoned R1 residential. The city is asking just to rezone this property. It's approximately just over 282 acres in size. We're wanting to rezone it from R1 single family to C3 open display commercial. The county is currently building their road construction from Willie Ray Road to Omni Farms Road. Again, this is a big parcel of property that we're, the city's just wanting to rezone commercials so that they can, future buildings that are going to come on several of these lots can already be in the zoning conformity. So if you have any questions, I can answer them. If not, Mr. Burrows is here from the city if you have any questions for him.
Laura, I do have some involvement with this project, so I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself. And Commissioner Lowe, if you wouldn't mind taking over on this item.
All right, see Mr. Brian Burrows here. Brian, would you like to say anything from the city perspective on this?
Hey, if you're here, we want to hear you talk, Brian.
Now, I designed this thing to come back this way. I didn't design it, I'm sorry, somebody else did. No, just to, just to clear up and we, we start from the beginning. Four Mile Creek's commercial park started as a, and y'all, this body saw the original plat, the preliminary plat, and approved it. And now you've approved a final plat. Somewhere in the middle of that, Lion College came about and caused a change in the use. Originally, you know, you know, the code allows for schools and municipal facilities to be in any zone and, but that may not always stay that way. And this property, the piece that we're selling to Lion College, will change hands. So if the surrounding property changes uses at any point in the future, the zoning would be simpler now as a whole, rather than in pieces, because we see Lion College as causing some increased development in the area. And so there's, there's no doubt that some other parcels that we have around it are going to pop up and we want to go ahead and have that zoning taken care of. Because we see a long range, we see, and on Master Street Plan, there's a corridor that would go north of this property, we intend to, for it to tie into the western side. So this is gonna, it's gonna pop, we believe. It's gonna move the needle, so just wanted to say that.
All right.
Is there, this is a public hearings, is there anyone here to speak for this item? Is there anyone here to speak against the item? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to the commissioners. Any comments, questions?
Well, historically, we shy away from C3, especially in new areas like that. What, why is the purpose of C3? That opens it up to a lot of, a lot of worse areas, I might, I might say. Rather than C2, will C2 work?
I think we, we wanted to choose, choose the broad, we saw this subdivision as an industrial-type park initially. It was going to be a, you know, a gun range and a fire training center and even a future fire station. We were probably going to put the street shop up there. But it would initially, in, in, in many cities and towns, the I-1 district, the industrial district, is the most expansive to allow the most things to happen there. What we envision, this is our vision, is the parcel lot 2, which would be of the subdivision, is, we see that as a, a commercial bottom with a residential top, sort of a promenade type, because we know there's going to be some shopping, we know there's going to be some coffee restaurants, and we see a mixed there. And our, we did not want storage units to be, to happen there, for obvious reasons. So to answer your question, we wanted the broadest zoning to allow for that. I mean, obviously you could use a PUD or something like that, but as it plans out. But I don't have any objection. The school and the CAS building can already go in the R1 zone, so you're not stopping anything. We just want to be able to pursue that vision and not have to, we want to do this one time.
Sure, and I, and I see that, you know, but you're going to be around a college there. Is a C3 going to fit in there, around that area? C3 encompasses, it'd be a junkyard, couldn't it? Open display of anything.
Who owns all this property, Brian?
Who?
Who owns all the property?
The city of Cabot.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so we're, we, we are in the, it's kind of weird to say, but we're in the driver's seat as to how that develops. The college has asked to have first right of refusal on the adjacent properties because they have some, you know, future plans. And we want, again, we just wanted the broadest zoning. No particular reason to open display or not, but we just wanted the broadest zoning.
Well, that opens it up to that, I'd rather...
For the record, a salvage yard, it's only allowed with a special use permit in I-1.
Oh, okay.
Just for the... Just to say, just to put that to bed.
We actually had a guy interested and he was going to put it, we thought we'd put it...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, personally, I'd like to see it start as a C2, you know, but...
Laura, what do you, what's, well, you and I discussed the C3 option as going forward. What would be our limitations? Remind me if you can.
So I, I'm looking at the table of permitted uses and I, and I'm just going to read out what we have. So C2 or C3, doesn't matter either one of them, you can have an automobile repair service shop. You can have a, you know, an automobile lot, sales lot. General commercial is in either one of those. For C3, it only allows for big box stores. I'm not going to name any names, but that have open display as well. For C2 and C3 is small-scale commercial, parking garage. C3 would only allow parking for contractor parking lots. A convenience store could go in C2 or C3.
So really, we're just, yeah, so we just really picked it up for the box store.
Hotels are C2 and C3, whether it's small or large scale. There's not much that can go in C3 that cannot, there's, that cannot go in C2. Your big box store, again, your open display commercial, that could not necessarily be a big box store. It still could be something else, but has a 24-hour open display that's only allowed in C3.
We were thinking a mega Dollar General.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, we need another one. Would probably fit right there.
So really, there's only a couple items in our table of permitted uses that is allowed in C3, that's not allowed in C2. There's like, I only named like three of them, I think.
Thank you.
There have been conversations that I'm not allowed to share, one, or privy to the content that our economic developer, development coordinator has had with several commercial entities. So the request, when we pushed this through the mayor's office, C3 seemed to fit. That, I think that's the broadest. We don't have a specific idea in mind, but we don't, we don't really see Dollar General going there, all jokes aside.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, any other questions? To, we would need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner O'Gwin?
Second.
Second from DeArmond. Roll call, Laura, please.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
Young, oh, pardon me. DeArmond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Motion passes. And we'll turn it back over to our chairman.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, next item, my business, item B.
Rezone 400 West Pine Street, R1 single family residential to O1 office and quiet business, Bond Consulting Engineers. Okay, so this is a request of property located at 400 West Pine Street. The property owners are First Baptist Church. Bond Consulting Engineers is the applicant. They are wanting to rezone this piece of property that currently houses a house on it from R1 single family to O1 office and quiet business district. It's located at the corner of North 4th Street and West Pine Street. Again, it does have an existing structure on it. I can let Gary Walker is here with the church. If you have any questions for him, I don't want to say anything that is not for me to say, so he can answer any questions that you might have for him as far as to why they're wanting to rezone this from R1 to O1. But if you have any questions for me, I can answer them. And again, Mr. Walker is here with the church if you have any questions for him.
All right, thank you, Laura. Either Tommy or Mr. Walker want to come up and...
Good evening.
No questions.
I just want to ask about the purpose of the rezone?
Really, it's just to go from residential to office, to be able to, it's, it's a building that we don't use today. It's residential to be able to lease it to somebody to, for an office space. We would need to do some work on the inside and underpinning on the outside, so we'd have to do some construction on it. So we're just taking it one step at a time. First is to go from R1 to O1.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Any questions from commissioners? All right, thank you. Anyone here to speak against this item? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to approve or...
Motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Prater, give a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Byrd. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
All right, 6-0, rezone is approved. Thank you. All right, it is 7:43 and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll get into planning commission new business. Item A, Laura.
Replat lot 6R, 7R, 10R, and 12R, block 3, Moore and Martin addition, Tucker land surveying. Okay, so this is the property that we visited a little while back about all the variance requests on it. It is located at the corner of North Monroe Street and Walnut Street. Again, they are wanting to replat these several lots, nine city lots into four lots. It would be contingent, I mean, not contingent, but with the variances specifically spelled out on the plat that y'all previously approved. Then the other thing is just to add the floodplain boundary to the vicinity map. Other than that, all the comments were addressed in the staff report.
All right, thank you, Laura. Nick, you want to add anything to Laura's report? Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions? Not entertain a motion to approve the replats?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from DeArmond, give a second?
Second.
Second from Byrd. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
All right, 6-0, replat is approved. Next item, Laura.
Replat lot 7R, 8R, and 9R, Louis Bailey addition, Tucker land surveying. This is the second replat that we saw earlier on the agenda of the property for the variances that's located at South Grant Street and Suda Street. Again, these are three city lots that they're wanting to recreate three lots for that have two existing homes on it. Again, they would have to spell out the requested variances that y'all did approve. Other than that, all the other staff comments were approved in the staff report.
All right, Nick, any comments on this one? Commissioners, have any questions? I entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Prater, give a second?
Second.
Second from O'Gwin. A roll call vote, please, Laura.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
All right, 6-0, that replat is approved. All right, item C.
Replat lots 3A and 3B, Nally Industrial Edition, Bond Consulting Engineers. Okay, so this is a replat for two lots that is located at the intersection of Highway 321 and Nally Road. It is lot 3A does have a commercial business currently located on it and lot 3B is currently vacant. They both are zoned currently C2. Again, they're just wanting to replat these into two separate lots. As you can see in the staff report, the only outstanding comment is just getting it approved here and then certifications signed and stamped. There is some floodplain boundary on this property, as you'll see in the site plan on the next agenda item. They are not even, they're not approaching that floodway property, so that is the only hazardous area that's located on this property, these two lots. If you have any questions for me, I can answer them. If not, Mr. Bond's here, and if you have any questions for him.
Mr. Bond, did Laura leave anything out of the report? Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioners, have any questions? All right, seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the replat.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Lowe, second?
Second.
Second.
Who was that? DeArmond?
Yeah.
All right, roll call vote, please, Laura.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
All right, six zero, replat is approved. Thought that motion was going to die for lack of, a second? All right, item D, Laura.
Site plan, lot three B, Nally Industrial Edition, Bond Consulting Engineers. Okay, so this is lot B, I'm sorry, lot three B of Nally Industrial Edition. They are proposing a, proposing a building to, a new construction building of about 4,900 square feet to be built on this property with parking, landscaping sidewalks, and everything also associated with a site plan. Again, this property is just north of the current Young's Tire's property that's located at the corner of Highway 321 and Nally Road. As you can see in the staff report, there were several items in the staff report that the applicant did address. There are some outstanding comments that are minor comments that I believe can be worked out between staff and the applicant. Other than that, there are just some permits that have to get applied for before they can get a building permit, and then the developer's agreement with Cabot Water Works. Other than that, the applicant has addressed most of the items. If you have any questions for me, I can answer them. Again, Mr. Bond's here for this project, if you have any questions for the applicant.
Mr. Bond, anything? Point to the guy next to you. I just, anything to add?
What about the all metal facades?
Okay, so on the all metal facades, in our building standard requirements, as long as they are concealed fasteners, it can have as much of a percentage on the facade.
Okay.
You know, and on the elevations that they submitted, the architectural elevations they submitted, they are labeled as concealed fasteners.
It's considered a higher quality exterior metal panel?
Yes.
Laura, is there a driveway spacing requirement on Nally Road?
In the master street plan, it states for the driveways from an intersection, it does have a minimum requirement, but the separation, they ask, I believe it's for a 200 minimum separation or to the furthest extent possible.
We're meeting neither of those with this, correct?
The separation is less than 100 feet. So there is a little bit of background information on lot three A and three B. So when three B is, was purchased, and I don't know if Mr. Bond or Justin can answer or correct any of this information, they did not realize that Young's Tire actually built over onto the property that the, Mr. Bruce owns for lot three B. So their driveway was on their property, so they negotiated some property line, and that's why we're on this replat of these, that's why the replat actually happened to separate these two lots. As far as moving the property, driveway down further on Nally? I can request that. I don't know the answer as far as if it, there was, I think, some drainage issues further down the property as to why that separation is so small.
Can we hear from the applicant, why, is there a justifiable reason that that shouldn't be lined up with a second?
If you would come up to the podium.
Versus the center one? I mean, I, I appreciate the mutual access, I just, 90 feet away from driveways is asking for issues.
With the existing driveway, they have agreed on a 40-foot mutual access easement since that's the existing one and since they built it over. From what Aaron told me, whenever he briefed both of us on this, he had the, the, he was allowed an open ditch, so he wanted to put the open ditch on the north side to provide a little more extra drainage. And I, he didn't tell us anything about the, the spacing requirement between the driveways, but I figured, I figured he did that for, for the drainage, like Laura said.
So, so sliding that drive to the north to line up that second drive out, is there any issues with that? I don't see how that would affect drainage.
Besides the existing utilities, which we, I can't see them on here, but Aaron did point out that there's some existing utilities just to the north of that driveway that, that was the reason why he couldn't move the sidewalk over as well towards, towards the property, why he had it on the, on the road.
Well, even if they moved it down, is that going to allow enough space to give the distance between those driveways to meet code?
I would not think so.
There's, because there's not a measurement there on, on that, so you don't know how much.
It would push it north, probably about 40, 45 feet.
So that would.
It separated about 135 feet versus 90.
I'm seeing you'd move it about 60 feet.
60 feet?
Well, you've got 11-foot drive out, two 20-foot drivelines, another 11-foot drive out, for center to center, you'd move that 60 feet.
Okay.
I, I think that, I mean, we not, we not reach the driveway spacing, but to get that closer to.
It's the furthest.
The standard, yeah, to the furthest extent that meets, otherwise, we're just kind of thumb our nose at that.
And if I had the plans in front of me, I'd be able to tell you what utilities are there. I know there's a pull box at the end of the, at the end of lot three B, but I, I want to say he said that there was also a power pole there somewhere, but I can't see it on these plans, because it's kind of tiny.
So Laura, is this something that staff can work out with the applicant?
I can, if, if that's how you, so desire, yes.
So, so how would I capture my motion to you, Laura? I mean, I, I would like to see that done. If it can't be done, then all right, but I think that needs to be a consideration from,
Okay.
from staff to try to move that driveway as far as. With that, I'll make a motion to approve with that condition.
All right, got a motion to approve with those stipulations from Commissioner Low, do a second?
Second.
Second from DeArmond, a roll call vote, please, Laura.
Prater?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
All right, six zero, motion passes. All right, next item, Laura.
Final plat, Windridge Estates, phase two, Bond Consulting Engineers. Okay, so this is another phase of the Windridge Estates that is located off of Highway 89 South. This is connecting phase one that they've currently are starting to run out of lots to build on. The property is zoned R one, they're proposing this for 36 more additional single-family detached residential lots. It's approximately just under 13 acres in size. Again, this is phase two of the Windridge Estate subdivision located on the south side of town. There are some outstanding comments in the staff report that I would ask if this is approved to be contingent on, that they need to take care of the street si, street signage and coordinate with that, with the street department. Then all the infrastructure needs to be installed, including the curb and gutter, the asphalt, any calming devices that were shown on the preliminary plans, street lights, et cetera. And then the developer needs to pay the wastewater fees to the Cabot Water Works. Other than that, the staff items have been addressed.
With that many things under contingency, is it appropriate to approve this?
So typically, on a final plat of this size or any size for a subdivision, if the infrastructure's not install, been installed, it's typically they haven't gotten to the asphalt or the curb and gutter quite yet, or they're right there at it. So approving this with these contingencies, staff is okay with that. It is completely up to the commission if you want to either table this or however you see fit, but if they are to the point of putting asphalt down in the next two weeks, this would save them some timeframe.
Understood.
I think the question is, is this going to be approved, it's going to be finished in the next 30 days or not?
I did not have that answer.
Whether, does the applicant hear that?
Justin, do you know that answer?
I don't see it. Yeah. It's dirt out there.
Did everybody hear that?
Yeah. It's just dirt out there right now. I don't, the weather, I don't think they're going to make 30 days.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? I entertain a motion.
With those contingents, with those contingents, contingencies there, I'll make the motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve with the contingencies from staff, from Commissioner Prater, do a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Byrd, a roll call vote, please, Laura.
Low?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
All right, six zero, motion passes. All right, item F.
Preliminary plat, lot one, sundown at Cardinal, Lemmons Engineering Consultants. Okay, so this is a preliminary plat for a piece of property that's located at 262 Cardinal Lane. There is a single family residential structure on it. The applicant is proposing a preliminary plat to, it's also concurrent with an applicant for a site plan for them to build duplexes and triplexes on. This property is located on Cardinal Lane, just west of the intersection of Kerr Station and Cardinal. Again, all the, in the staff report, the applicant has addressed all the items except for getting final approval through y'all. If you have any questions for me, I can answer that for the preliminary plat. If not, Mr. Lemmons is here, if you have any questions for him.
All right, thank you, Laura. Mr. Lemmons, want to add anything else to the preliminary plat? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
A motion from DeArmond, do a second?
Second.
Second from Low, a roll call vote, please, Laura.
Byrd?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
All right, six zero, preliminary plat is approved. And last item, Laura.
Site plan, lot one, sundown at Cardinal, Lemmons Engineering. Okay, so this is the site plan to go in concurrent with that preliminary plat that you just approved. Again, this property is located at 262 Cardinal Lane. They are proposing to build three duplex units and two triplex units. The property, again, is just located to the west of Kerr Station and Cardinal Intersection. They're proposing 12 total door fronts on this property. There are a few outstanding items in the staff report that were not addressed. I think that those items can be handled between staff and the applicant. There's really not any, any major ones in the staff report, other than just a landscape plan, one drainage comment, and then the developer's agreement prior to any sewer and water installation. Other than that, the staff comments have been addressed. Mr. Lemmons is here, if he has, if you have any questions for him.
All right, thank you, Laura. Tim?
Just a quick question about the, the structures, what type of structures are being?
That's the one question I may not be able to answer.
Okay.
It'd take him 20 minutes to get here, but he's almost.
Do you want square footage wise of them or? Okay, so the duplexes, they're just under 2,200 square feet, and the triplexes? 34, okay, I was going to say, it looked like just under 3,400 square feet.
I thought you were asking about the exterior, my bad.
Okay.
They will be all grid.
Again, they're proposing three duplex units on the east side and two triplex units on the west side of the property with detention, looks like curb and gutter in the, within the property sidewalks.
And Bobby, you, your group has reviewed this from a egress standpoint, firefighting, hydrants, hammerhead, okay with you guys, banking in and out of? Any questions?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
All right, got a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve, we got two seconds, one from Prater and one from O'Gwin.
Give it to him.
Pick one.
A roll call vote, please, Laura.
O'Gwin?
Yes.
DeArmond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Low?
Yes.
Prater?
Yes.
All right, six zero, motion is approved. Thank you, guys.
I can't believe you got this entire agenda done in an hour and three minutes. I'm impressed.
We're fishing.
We were less than five minutes left.
I remember once where we had to adjourn at 11 o'clock, come back the next night and finish a public hearing.
All right, this is community input time. Anybody have anything?
I do have one announcement. So next month's meeting is actually going to be the fifth Tuesday instead of the fourth Tuesday, so next month's meeting is going to be April 29.
April 29?
Yes.
Sounds good. Anything else, anyone? Anybody going to cheer the hogs on in San Francisco?
Sounds like you are.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, everyone. See you next month.